This meeting of the Green Bay zoning and planning board of appeals to order. And a roll call, Bill Helverson, present, Bart Dorff.
Present.
Steven?
Not.
Not present? Cory?
Not.
Excused.
Joshua?
Present.
Benjamin?
Not.
We have four of them?
We have three out of five.
Three of them. All right. Okay. Approval of the agenda for this meeting.
So.
Second.
Well, that's unfortunate because there's like seven things I missed. I was hoping you'd be.
You can play John next, but I'll take it for a second.
All right. There's a motion to second to approve the agenda. Any further discussion here, none in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Prove the minutes of the April 5th meeting.
Move to approve.
April 15th, I'm sorry.
Move to approve.
Second.
So, motion is second. Any further discussion here, none in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, on to regular business. And I've got some things to read about this. So, the zoning and planning board of appeals hears and acts on appeals for variances from city zoning code requirements. The members of the board are appointed, and the board acts as a quasi judicial body during these appeals, which means that appeals are presented, kind of like a case is presented in court. And the board acts as the judge and determines whether to grant the appeal by a majority vote. For each item, we will hear from the applicant or the petitioner and staff, and we'll actually hear from staff first, as well as any additional witnesses where appropriate. If you are the petitioner for an item on tonight's agenda, please come and take a seat at the table here with us when your item is called. And so, on to regular business. Appeal 24-12, consideration with possible action on a request from Ray Hutchison, applicant and property owner seeking to build a accessory detached garage building in front of a primary residential structure at 1767 East Shore Drive.
Right.
All right. It is the goal of the board of appeals to provide and conduct a hearing that is fair, informed, appearance, and substance. To ensure that this hearing satisfies these goals, each member of the board of appeals please confirm the following for this appeal by stating, "I confirm. I do not have a conflict of interest in this matter."
I confirm.
I confirm. I have not received any communication from any person or party about this matter.
I confirm.
I confirm.
I confirm. All right. Welcome, Mr. Hutchison. And we'll hear from staff first. Jay, John, please take it away.
Swear me in, please? Just swear me in.
Oh, sure, thank you. Well, yeah, my vice chair here is keeping me on track. John, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please proceed.
All right. So, consideration for this request is seeking to build an accessory detached garage building in front of a primary residence within an hour one over on East Shore Drive. The specific code is 44-590 sub C sub one. Detached accessory structure shall be located to the side or rear of the principal structure or building and not provided within the required front yard or within the side yard abutting the street. So, the property itself is over on East Shore with the bay being the rear yard. The property is a narrow lot. And you're seeing right here, the existing building takes this space. And right now, as you'll see from the existing photos, there is a garage that does, is in place on the property in front of the building. It is looking nonconforming. But the applicant is looking to remove the structure and replace it with a structure in front of the house near the same area as is placed right now. To do a 24 by 30 foot building, that meets all the rest of the code. As long as it stays off the side yard setback for the structure, that meets as well. This is a revision as to what was initially put place for. There is some talk about potentially needing a CUP or other variances, but we've found a way within the rules of the code to make the roof structure work here. So, it wouldn't be this one particularly, but this is approximately the form of what is going on. What's different about this one is this is a two-story structure. He's going to change it up to where it's a one-story structure. A pronounced roof, but it works in the rules of the code itself. So, as we go back to the neighborhood itself, you will notice quite a few homes that happen to have garages in front of the buildings or in their, beyond narrow lots. When it comes to these, a number of these came through, there are variances, or came through being legal, nonconforming grandfather structures that were placed when, in the past, many of these structures were cottage homes on very narrow lots. And now, here in the recent past, there have been some new construction where homes have been more with attached garages to them, but they're typically wider lots. This is a narrow lot, both in this area, just by our general definition within the code. Unless you really remove part of the structure, there's no way to put a garage back there. Additionally, with this being the bay and that being an area where you have view sheds, you do not see garages in the back of homes in this area, nor does the code necessarily want that to happen. There are bulk requirements, there are also requirements of the bay itself back in this area. So, with that in mind, our petitioner is seeking relief to allow the placement of the home, or sorry, of the garage in front of the home.
John, this seems like the sort of situation where we might actually say there ought to be a special bit in the code that specifically addresses, you know, the bay shore or something like that. Is there anything like that in the code?
There is not. Staff has discussed this. You recognize that this is a circumstance that people on East Shore and in Galley Avenue especially with the existing narrow lots. And so, at some point in the future, noting that we've had variances and existing structures like this, planning staff may reinforce some co-recommendations to come and counsel, but at the time, we do not have that.
Thanks. Any questions for staff? All right, let's hear from Mr. Hutchison. Yes, I need to swear you in. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Great. Please tell us why you need this variance.
Well, just very quickly, we actually purchased the house about 40 years ago. And I would estimate the garage at that time was at least 20, 25 years old. It's not been usable for a very long time, a couple of decades, I suppose. And we've talked about trying to replace it for a while and finally are able to do so. The lot is about 60 feet wide total and a little bit less than that. But there's no way to obviously put it on the side of the house. Fortunately, no road along the top of the bay yet, so we can't get in from any other way.
No questions? Any questions for our petitioner?
I don't.
Oh.
John. I'll note the property itself is 58 feet wide, and the approximate setbacks on both are about six to eight feet on both sides of the property line.
Okay. Discussion?
I actually think this is an absolute yes for me, and I'm going to tell you why. Because preservation of intent, yes, it would not be consistent with the spirit and purpose. Yes, there should be the ability for person to have a garage on their property. The exceptional circumstances is this is a very, very narrow lot. And so, we can't obviously put it on the bayside. There's usually wet lenses and such there. And so, he needs to put it where it was before. The preservation of property rights, it's necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of the same substantial property rights which are possessed by other properties in the same district or vicinity, as is noted by all the garages that are in front of the buildings, because people have garages, because they have cars. Absence of detriment, I don't, it won't create a detriment. In fact, as stated in the appeal, the older garage is kind of a eyesore, and it will be a nice new garage, and it will actually add to the neighborhood. And the hardship is not based on, is not self-imposed, nor is it based on economic grounds. It's based on the fact that this lot is an unusually narrow shape. So, that would be my reason for yes.
That's reasonable to me. One thing I, you know, we go do this, and I'm wondering if I should do this again, especially seeing the caller ask if somebody else wants to speak to the matter.
As a general rule, unless it's a witness for one party or the other, they shouldn't be opening the floor.
The votes should know that before we hear them. Is that what you're saying?
Sometimes, sometimes there may be people who want to speak, but unless they have something, some factual knowledge that's essential to the board to make its decision, they, it shouldn't just be like an open forum weighing in, because it is, it is actually like a hearing. It's not just a.
Yeah, I just don't know how we deal with it if there is somebody that's here that we don't necessarily know.
Typically, it would be either staff or the applicant would point and say, like, "My neighbor's here to speak," or, you know, "So-and-so is here to speak."
Okay, great. So, you know, that was pretty compelling, Vice Chair Dorff. So, is there any counterpoints or other?
Oh.
No, no counterpoint. I would just add on the absence of detriment piece that this actually seems to foster the public interest by keeping the structures off of the bayside.
Okay.
So, I move to approve.
Second.
We got a motion in a second to approve the variances requested. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Do you have your variance? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead and take that.
No.
Number two, appeal 24-13, consideration with possible action on a variance request submitted by Brian and Rebecca Jones, applicants and property owners, requesting to exceed driveway width standards in a front yard at 1827 Dowsmun Street. Please come up, and then we will have staff speak first. John, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I do.
Did you do conflicts yet?
Oh, didn't do conflicts yet.
Sorry.
She was right there.
Does, if anybody has a conflict in this matter, you know, or if you can, confirm the following statements, please do so. I do not have a conflict of interest in this matter.
I confirm.
I confirm.
I confirm. I have not received any communication from any person or party about this matter.
I confirm.
I confirm.
I confirm.
Great. All right. John, do you, you already swore?
We swore you've been backwards.
I'll be sure. We're good.
Go ahead.
All right. Since property is over at 1827 Dowsmun Street over on the west side, there are two parts of the code that come into play here. Section 44-1746, driveway shall lead from the public driveway directly to a garage door opening plus 24 inches on either side of said door or to a legal surface parking stall, parking space. Section 44-1746 to sub C, attached garages, driveways leading to attached garage shall meet the acceptable side setback for principal structures in the district or shall meet the side setback of the existing garage, whichever is less. So, this is a property on Dowsmun. St. Mary's Hospital is back over this way. What you're seeing here is an existing view of the property itself. So, it's a two-stall garage attached with two stalls that are on the, into the, on the front of the property with about 25 feet or so in front of the garage itself. What they're looking to do is place an addition, so some additional driveway on the side of the existing driveway to have 102 inches of driveway space, maybe three feet or so from the edge of the side yard. Now, recall, you can have a driveway space alongside of garage if you meet the following standard. You have to have eight foot wide minimum for the park install and two and a half feet for your side yard as well, putting two and a half feet. They have eight feet between the existing home and the property line. So, with that said, looking back to here, the driveway could be expanded a bit because it does not go two feet past the garage door opening within the code, but they're looking to put an additional stall in the front yard that does not lead to a legal parking stall and be an additional stall in the front yard itself exceeding that 24 inches past a garage door. They meet the code as far as minimum standards for a house by having the two interior and two exterior on the property. This is another view, looking back this way, they have eight feet or so between that. So, if you happen to have the space to put alongside, you can then put in that stall by code. But if you don't, you can't place an additional parking stall out front unless you have the exception where it's an attached single stall garage and you're not intruding with that front door entrance. Otherwise, the parking, it's not a legal stall. And so, that's what that question here is, is expansion acceptable to allow for parking in the front yard setback?
I have questions. You go ahead.
So, did you have a discussion at all about past practice with this?
No, we didn't. So, and I know this has come up in the past, but there were discussions with the, we didn't personally, but there were discussions with other parts of the building inspection staff. It's a request to place this in, and so this has been requested to go forward.
Did you give, did you advise whether or not they should go through with this request?
I didn't say that this would be a, so when I'm talking to folks, I don't say it's absolutely not going to happen on these things. And I, we've seen this in the past where other ones have been, have not been approved in this, but it was the request to come forth and ask for the request.
Okay. I just wanted to know if they had that information.
Just for my purposes, go ahead. See the area view one more time.
Sure.
Please. Thank you.
And so, what you're seeing to the right there is a corner lot that has a duplex which has two entryways. It also has a very illegal, nonconforming additional drive, which looking back at prior photos is there, probably the 70s at some point.
Any other questions for staff? John, thank you. Let's hear from our petitioner.
So, we have, as you see, two stall garage and then two parking spaces behind. We have three children, so we have, we have four vehicles. And our youngest, who's here because she couldn't wait to hear the answer, would like to get a car, needs to get a car. She got her license in August, and we've been sharing a car since, and it's been difficult. We've made it work because her school schedule and my work schedule kind of align, so we've made that work. And then, she works only one day a week because I don't like being left without a car when I need to do things. So, next year, she'll be a senior, and our schedules do not align. And she would like to work more hours because she has a lesser school schedule, and she'll be going to college the following year. So, she wants to work and save money. And the really only way she, we can get myself to my job and her to school is for her to have a car. So, this lot is a crucial part of that.
Were, can I ask, were you offered any alternatives? I mean, from staff, did they make any other suggestions to you?
Not really. I did have an inspector come out. Originally, we talked in email, and then I said, "I'd really like you to come out and just explain what needs to go on." And I mean, I learned a lot about it. And he said, "It's probably best to go with a variance." And it really came down to the side where we could not go up the side tops. So, he said, "You could come out here, you would have to go with a variance." And that's what he recommended. He said, "You could actually go towards the front of the house," which I said, "You know, who in the world would do that anyway?" You know, the other way, but, which I don't want to do. So, it really boiled down to, it can't go next to, because we have eight feet, and that's what we need for a legal parking spot. Is the eight foot plus your two and a half feet from the lawn line.
Which, that would actually be the hardship, not the work, not what you said. That is a hardship. But from legal perspective, the hardship would be that if your side yard is too narrow. That's all the questions I have.
John, if they were to propose a, an expansion on the side, they're still limited to, what, 24 inches, right?
Yeah, you're still limited to 24 inches on both sides. So, to put a legal parking stall, it just won't happen. The 24 inches is meant as an extra buffer space for doors opening, maybe a wider vehicle in general, but in some room to walk and step around where you're not into the grass. But the rules are pretty straightforward. It comes to front yard parking stalls and spaces.
Yeah. I mean, without a variance, the widest they're going to be able to go is another four feet total width with 24 inches on each side of an existing driveway.
Correct. Which would not be a legal parking stall.
Right.
And I'll note this also is a wide parcel. This is pushing 90 meters.
Any question, other questions for staff or the petitioners? All right, let's deliberate.
I'll take, I guess I might give my thoughts first. I'm having a hard time getting there on a number of issues. The top two from my perspective, I'm not seeing any exceptional or unusual circumstances that apply to this particular lot or intended use. It appears to be in line with a lot of the other lots in the same neighborhood. And the hardship piece, I think, at the risk of sounding insensitive, I think it is a self-imposed hardship. We all have growing families and things of that nature. It's predictable that our kids are going to reach driving age, and it's a problem that a lot of folks have. But for, those are the top two reasons. Frankly, for either of those reasons, I can't get there. I'm certainly open to suggestion, but I would, I wouldn't be able to, at this point, say yes to the request here.
I can get there on hardship. You can get it. Because I really do think that the narrowness of the lot prevents them from putting one in their side yard. And they didn't plan the house to do that. You know, they didn't impose that on themselves. But they want another parking space. I get it for the growing family. But as far as the lot is concerned, but I am, because I know in the past how we have treated these, I'm really having a hard time. Because that's why I was wondering if you could have been spoken with ahead of time about this. Typically, this isn't ever allowed. So, I don't know if there's any, anything that you guys can think of. I can get there in hardship. We have to, as you said at the beginning, and maybe it wasn't, you know, as relevant, but does it preserve the intent of the spirit and purpose of the regulations? Well, it does not. The variance does not. The spirit and intent of the regulations is that you don't have this extra driveway on the side of your yard. You've had situations where people had put it in already, and they had to drill it out because it's not, allow it to go there. The extraordinary circumstances, yeah, I guess I could go with the hardship. You know, we have to say yes to all five. And that is that your side yard is narrow. Preservation of property rights, does.
It's not exceptional.
It's not exceptional.
It's consistent with the spirit of the neighborhood.
Okay, then. Preservation of property rights, it's necessary for the enjoyment of the same substantial property rights which are possessed by other properties? Well, you have a garage and you have a driveway, and that's, that is your preservation of property rights right there. An absence of detriment? I don't think it's going to have a detriment, but I can't say yes on all five. And I'm really sore about that because I really tried to find my way to yes.
Can I ask a question?
Go, please.
There are so many houses in Green Bay. I could go around and take pictures of so many of these that have them. And they don't look bad, so I'm just wondering why, why were those allowed?
They weren't necessarily all allowed.
They weren't.
So, if we get out in the middle of the night and we put this in?
But then you've had to, like I said, people have had to take them out after. Do you have any history for us where this has been allowed?
Right. I can note, we've been doing some research on other properties back from, of border fills back in the 90s, and they routinely have 25 to 35 appeals at each meeting. And routinely, they would get approvals in the 90% range. These things, maybe 30 years ago, would be approved a lot more. But then, certain people had complaints saying, "There's an actual problem with this. This leads to the intent where people are parking too close to property lines." And that's where the code got really pushed upon, like, "No, we're going to stick to the code itself and what the intent of a board of appeals is." So, yes, this could have happened. And there's also properties where it may seem like things are, the ten and a half feet can, you don't, the property line is an invisible line. So, if you happen to acquire two and a half more feet, you could do what you're asking to do here. It just so happens you don't have that two and a half feet on this property to make it happen.
Thanks, John. Well, it doesn't sound like either of you are able to find a basis for granting an appeal on all five points here. Is there an action to be made here?
Since I started off, I'll make the motion to deny based on the reasons previous stated.
And I'm sorry that I have to second that.
Got a motion in second to deny the request. Any further discussion? For you, none in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Sorry, we need to. Number three, consideration with possible action on a request from Darian Stock, applicant and property owner, requesting to exceed individual driveway standards for a two-family residence at 1749-1751 South Onida Street. And for our members here, if you can, please state, "I confirm," to the following statements from me. I do not have a conflict of interest in this matter.
I confirm.
I confirm.
I confirm. I do, I have not received any communication from any person or party about this matter.
I confirm.
I confirm.
I confirm. John, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
All right, I got it right that time.
All right. Since this property is over on South Onida, and we'd be close to the stadium, what's at play here is one code, section 44-1746 sub D. Driveways for two-family buildings with adjacent garages are limited to the 25 feet maximum with the property line for each individual driveway. Each individual driveway must be separated by a minimum of a two-foot green area exceeding the full length of the property line to the garage slash uncovered parking space. Separation areas shall contain vegetation or other items designed to limit vehicular trespass. So, this is the property itself across from St. Mark's Church. Landbo is down this way. I'm going to show you the code here in illustration form as we're talking. So, this would be a typical side-by-side duplex. You can have driveways leading to each individual unit's driveway, but in the middle, there is supposed to be a two-foot grass strip separating those two to prevent ingress egress between the two sides of the property. This is the building in question. Now, this is before the renovations done by the applicants here over the past few months. The property, it was a single-story building. If you've gone on Onida Street here recently, you've noticed a two-story duplex out this way. But the form of the building has not changed insofar that it's still using the same front doors, the same garages. They've just popped up some space to make it taller. And I'll just go give you some trite examples. That's what it looks like now, nowadays, of the property. So, what's at play is the applicant is looking to change the existing legal, nonconforming driveway, which has one stall leading to the one-stall attached garage, to having the front yard parking space, the front yard exception for your single attached garage stall. So, he is looking to put in another parking stall on both sides of the property itself. That in its own form is legal and allowed. It's not blocking the entry into the building. There is space for it. And going back to our illustration, this all is fine. It's in line. You can expand the driveway apron down the street itself, that's fine. It's still to have the area for the green space. And part of the issue here is the amount of space between the garage doors that exist and how much space they then have for the garage stall. So, what the applicant is proposing is to have a 32-foot wide drive area that would lead then to the parking, the garage stalls themselves. In between the two garage doors, about one foot of space in between them. And then, the 32 feet would equal eight plus eight plus eight plus eight is for garage stalls at your minimum width on the property itself. So, what's not at play, though, is having that two-foot green space right down the middle of this. So, the code would say, "Put in two-foot space and then make it 16 feet on one side, 16 feet on the other side, and you have yourself a driveway." But as noted by these images, there's about one foot of space in between the garage doors themselves, which means that you.
That's the original, that's the space.
So, the original space, if you look back to here, you can see for context, a trash bin itself. It does appear as though there was a few more inches of space, but it wasn't two feet before. So, before was an illegal, nonconforming for both the space between the garage door and the lack of the green space itself. Because the applicant's looking to do the improvements, the driveway has to come under code, and that's, this is what I'm looking for right now, is the green space.
So. So, and if, what about like a one-foot green space?
That's your call on this.
That could be your call. So like, compromise. Because it's not put in yet, right? The driveway's not put in?
The driveway has not been, so the driveways you see here is the existing driveway that is in place on this side. I also want to note, we had a lot of discussions back and forth here over the past, to how to make this work, to whether it be just the one and only variance request on this. And that is, what's at play here is just the grassy parts. You'll note there's some additional green space that's been in progress here, but petitioner wasn't looking to put that garage, the parking stall area, right in front of the wall itself. They wanted to keep the space here to have the walkway for people to get some-
There'd be green space.
There'd be, yeah, there'd be green space on both sides. So you're seeing it here, still in progress, and then on the other side, I don't know if you quite seen it on this, but it'd be over that area then too.
Could you show us the plan view again?
Well, this is a proposed plan view.
The purpose of green space is to ensure that-
To ensure that ingress egress between the two properties does not exist, so that you're not going to take your car and go on into the neighboring units of the property.
So is that the permeable surface?
No.
That's covered already by the-
By the impervious surface code, which they're doing okay. They're getting close to the edge, but it's, it's fine, don't get close anymore.
John, any thought on the survivability of a strip of grass as one could wash-
That's exactly-
Right. I would suggest if this was a brand-new building with brand-new garages, this would be something where you'd say, make it wider.
Make it wider.
Yes, yes, but it's, it's just-
It's a retrofit of an existing structure and maybe making the best, the deal they can out of this right now. All right. Any other questions for staff? Let's hear from the petitioner.
Okay, so the fact that, oh, I'm sorry.
We've got some really- Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So my family's actually going to be moving into the left side of the duplex. So we have three cars, my wife and I and my daughter. But saying that, we're on a corner lot, which is on a busy street and we've got the rush center and Lambo right there. So we can't park on Oneida Street. We could park on Penwood, which is to the left of the property on the left. But again, with Patrick games, snow removal, it's, there's sidewalks going all around the front of my property. So even with the parking spaces that exist now, with the sidewalk coming in front, you can't park more than one car in each side of the driveway. And then with the green space, that would actually, you would have to drive over the green space to get in each garage stall, if we have to have that two feet of green space in there. So that's mainly what our problem is, that, and, you know, we want to remain having the green space in front of the house, especially because there's a gas meter on that right side. But the only way we could get closer is if we have the driveway go all the way to the house and, I'm afraid, people are going to run into the structure if we do that. We're just trying to get as much space as we can. That's why we're only going for the minimum of eight feet per driveway or 16 feet total, which I'd like to go wider, but if we do that, we're going to be close to the stairs and by code, we can't do that.
Go ahead.
So for, the issue is the green space. And all that stuff is good, but the issue is the green space.
Correct. Originally, when I met with John, I had the understanding that just to get the apron widened on the end of the street, that we needed bearings for that. And then we spoke again and it came down to the green space is what I need the bearings for. So without, without saying anything else, if I don't have the green space, then I guess, like you said, we're going to be driving over the green space, I mean, if we have to have green, we're going to be driving over that to get in the garage.
You may be, but I don't know if we can, I don't know if we can permit it, because I don't know, keep talking.
We're not, yeah, we're not there yet. John, in terms of the site itself, if they maximize the width of the driveway, it's just to the edge of the door or whatever that, you know, would be allowable for the one-stall garage and the extra drive, how much wider than 16 feet could each of those drivelines be?
That's a good question. I do not know what the exact measurement is from this part of the stairwell to the existing edge of garages I meant to refer to.
Do you know how, what the distance between the, you know, the inside of the door to the inside of the garage doors?
Yeah, I'm used to it.
Yeah.
As he's looking at that, I'll just make note, when we were initially talking about this, we were looking at the lens of, do we need to have triangle tapers here? That's what he's referring to. And making this wide and not, but he is permitted based off this to have the wider driveway on Oneida Street as long as it's leading to a legal parking stall. If it wasn't a legal parking stall, it could not be that wide. And frankly, if the parking stalls are put in, you have to either put the triangle taper in or make the apron wider, one or the other, because we can't have a situation where the driveway is wider, you get to a sidewalk and you have a narrow apron. You have to make either the apron wider or the tapers.
Sure.
But either ways, in either event, the only thing that's really at play here, because he's not going to take the driveway to the door itself, is that green space.
Would you go to the plan view again? If we don't have the dimension, let's say-
I do.
Oh, what is it?
Yeah, it's 10 feet from the edge of the garage, if we're looking at the picture on the map, it's 10 feet from the garage door to the door, it's the front door itself, to that, yes, right there. So if we did that, if we had the green space, that would be two feet, but then we'd be shrinking up the distance between, is there, what's the code on going from the driveway to the front door? I know there's a minimum on those, on that.
Oh, if you were to go in front of it, 18 feet is your minimum space? I'm sorry, 18 feet is your depth of your parking stall.
Jen, just go to the plan view if you would, please. Just, you know, so, you know, it looks like if you went over another foot or two, could do that on each side and still be inside that door, and now we're consuming as much green space as we're saying needs to be put in, in the, in the middle here.
You're right.
I'm struggling with the logic of requiring a one-foot strip of green space in this configuration. I don't think that's going to last real long. It's just going to be a dirt strip at some point, despite the best efforts of a green thumb owner to take care of it. And I don't know that we're doing that particularly any favors by insisting on this, given that they're already kind of designing something to maximize green around the driveway. I don't know. That's just my thinking on this right now, but we'll talk more about that in a minute. Is there any other questions for staff or the petitioner at the moment?
I have one more thing to add.
Joe, please.
So since we remodeled, it was a two-bedroom per side and now it's four-bedroom per side. So when we do rent out the other side, it's still going to be the same issue on how many, I'm sure mother, nowadays, mothers and fathers all have a car each, for the most part. And then someone else in there. So again, with the square footage of the building increased, that's why we are trying to get something to widen the driveway.
And just to reiterate again, all of this stuff, the improvements, the increase in the size of the building envelope, the additional bedrooms, the widening of the driveway, all these things are all totally okay per code. We're just hung on the one issue of a required two-foot strip down the middle of this driveway space, which only runs about a foot, it looks like, between the two stalls.
And again, the purpose, John, behind the two foot is to make sure that we don't have neighbors driving into each other's driveways.
Correct. Yeah. And in this case, it's not like there's two cars of stacking space, there's really only the one car that can stack in front of that garage. So it's not like, you pull in, there isn't like a pull-in and pull-over. There isn't going to be any room in terms of the depth of this driveway off of the street to navigate or negotiate from one side to the other. I don't think, you know, trespass across the lanes, if you will, is really going to be an issue here. All right. Any other questions for staff or the petitioner? All right, let's deliberate, since we already wanted to start doing this from the get-go on this one.
I'm open to be convinced.
All right. You want me to give this a shot? I think, I think I can see it a couple of different ways here.
Yeah, I guess, I'll let you give it a shot. The thought I have is, something in between the zero that's proposed versus the two feet that the code requires, maybe we have a foot of landscaping ground. That way, you have the buffer, but it's, we don't have to worry about keeping it alive, but at least you're consistent with the intent of the ordinance to have something in between those two driveways.
But to do what in that case? I guess I just see, well, to kick gravel around the driveways in the neighborhood there.
It's just a, I'm not married to the idea, but it seemed like it would at least satisfy some of, some of the apparent issues that we're talking about.
That's fair.
I'll shut up now and let you go.
No, I mean, I think, so here's the thing, I mean, if, if we're not going to insist on the two feet, and I think based on what's physically there to work with, we're creating something worse if we insist on that, because then you can't drive into the driveway, the garage itself, without running over landscaping. And, you know, just, again, John, if you could go back to that plan view, I keep asking to see it, because it helps me frame my thoughts here. But, you know, one thought, another one, you know, to go along with yours is, hey, do we say one foot wide, but to the depth of those beds between the garage doors and the front door of the house? And not go all the way down the driveway, but you've got, you know, say that's, I don't know, is that three, four feet coming away from the front of the house? Do you do a one-foot wide strip right there that's got a shrub in it, you know, that's not going to get too big?
It'd take a really narrow shrub.
It would still, right now, we would still have to drive on that green space to get in the garage. If there's any green, if there's green space in between the garage doors, you would have to drive over the green space to get in, because there's only a foot in between-
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's like, does it make sense to even say, let's have a foot there? Of like, you know, that's just one foot wide and three feet deep, you know? And again, that isn't, it doesn't, I don't think it gets us anything. So let me just try this here. I mean, I think the spirit, purpose and intent of the regulations for parking here is to have, not have chaotic parking in front of buildings, right? And having the strip to prevent neighbor A from crossing over into neighbor B's driveway and vice versa, because they're doing the car shuffle in the morning or something like that, is moot, I think, when there's only the depth of one car between the garage door and the sidewalk, you know? So I don't think that foregoing the strip here really violates the preservation of intent. It's not inconsistent with the purpose. It's just kind of recognizing, number two, the exceptional circumstance of this property. We have, you know, a building that was built with the garage doors never wide enough apart to have a two-foot strip. And now it's getting triggered, that compliance is getting triggered by a heck of a lot of improvement work at this property, which is making it also exceptional. I think it's, you know, it was a ranch and now it's a two-story building. That's kind of out of the ordinary. Maybe a little further south, it's not so much out of the ordinary, but in this block, it's out of the ordinary. And I think, you know, it's, it's an exceptional circumstance on there. Preservation of property rights, I mean, again, this goes back to, you know, people ought to be able to park their cars. We've got a code that said, hey, if you've got a one-stall garage, you can add a second stall to the side of it, as long as it doesn't block the front door. And I think that, you know, is part of what we're trying to do here. I don't see detriment to the lack of the one-foot strip. In fact, you know, if we went with the gravel, not to pick on my fellow board member here, but I think that would add detriment, because then you kick and gravel around every place. And so I don't see this, I see this all as part of an effort to make this property stand out in the neighborhood as a sign of reinvestment and taking care of the assets of this community by fixing up a house and expanding it. And I don't think this is a, you know, a self-imposed, or certainly not an economic aspect in the hardship. It's just the dumb luck of the way this building was put together and the struggle in complying with it. You know, I think we would, we would be foolish to try and force a bit of landscaping in where it just can't fit. And so I would, I would-
Would you approve? You convinced me completely.
I'll second it.
All right. We've got a motion and a second to approve the variance as requested. Any further discussion? And based on the five items that I just talked about, any further discussion? Here, not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Even in spite of the day call.
You could want to go with grass.
Thank you, John. All right.
Good job.
Have a great night.
Thank you, you too. Number four, appeal 24-15, consideration with possible action on a request from Jeffrey and Tammy Van Beaver, applicants and property owners requesting to exceed rear setback standards for a primary building within an R1 low-density residential district at 943 South Madison Streets. And before we start with them, I want to just state for the record, it is the goal of the Board of Appeals, a hearing that is fair in form, appearance and substance, to ensure that this hearing satisfies these goals for this item and every other item, even if I don't read this part of the statement. Each member of the Board of Appeals, please confirm the following for this appeal by stating, I confirm I do not have a conflict of interest in this matter.
I confirm.
I confirm. I have not received any communication from any person or party about this matter.
I confirm.
I confirm. And like all these other items, we'll hear from staff first. So John, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Please take it away.
All right. The verdict we're looking at right here is section 44-554, table 44-2, lot dimension and setback requirements for rezed districts. Rear yard building setback requirement within an R1 district is 25 feet. So we're at a corner lot here, over at Madison and Eliza. When it comes to determining what a front yard and a side yard is, sometimes we have a bit of leeway, but on this one, it's pretty clear, the front yard's on Madison. So the garage leads that way, it's addressed that way, the front door is that way, the front is along Madison and the side is on Eliza. What you're seeing here is the view, looking north along Eliza, so that's your side yard. Property line is about here, so you can see the neighboring building off this way. And over here, you're going to see the front yard view with the existing garage. The existing garage is a side of the garage. And the applicants are looking to change that space. It wouldn't be a garage anymore, they want to add on to the building and put a two-stall attached garage to where the driveway would come up and lead to it back this way, put in addition to the house in the northeast corner of the property. And the request is to have that attached garage be about 6.3 feet or so from the property line itself. These are some views of the property as well. We've seen the front on both sides, but you can see the existing fence on the north lot line and in the corner itself, essentially the area where they want to put this garage door, or the, sorry, additional garage. This would be your site plan view. So existing family home, right here, where you have that existing garage in this area. And then the request for a 34 by 24-foot garage up along the back of the property itself. Part of the issue here with this property is, you'll note, the existing side yard here, this is about 5.6 feet in that area. But you can't keep on compounding that within the code. So there happens to be an area of the property that is within 5.6 feet of the rear. Their request to put this garage door would be about, that's 6.3 feet or so from the garage, from the property line itself, up here on the northern part of the property. So if you're going to put a garage in, it's supposed to be 25 feet, because it's an attached building. If this was a detached accessory garage, then you could put this garage within four feet of the property line, but it has to be detached from the home for that to occur. Additionally, we've had our questions as far as attached garages and how far it has to be set back from the property line itself. You have to have at least 20 feet from the front yard line for your driveway space. It's easy to, somewhere around 26.7 feet in front of it, the, on the property line. So there could be some gore in there, but I want to note, there is a fair amount of terrain on this property and slope that extends, if you can see a bit better here in this photo, from back over here on the street, back up towards the garage for the property. I'll note, this item went in front of the Landmarks Commission, because it is within the Astor Historic Neighborhood. And what was presented was given an AOK on their parts. But they're not looking at the same lens that you are when it comes to this.
So, John, the, just, the current distance, the distance as proposed from the rear lot line is what on this?
It's 6.3 feet or so, six foot, three inches.
And what's the minimum?
25 feet.
Yeah, so there's, yeah, okay. And if it were detached, it could be four feet.
If it were detached-
How does that work? What is the thinking- I don't, how does that work, what is the thinking there between that difference? If it's detached, it can be four feet away, but if it happens to be attached to the primary structure, now it's got to be 25 feet from it?
I hear you on that. I, I would say, when it comes to an attached part of the building, you are generally doing more activity inside your primary structure, it's all attached, where the thought process being, the accessory detached would have less usage, so it can go somewhere else that gets closer to a property line. I believe the thought process is the code in that regard, but those are the rules. If it's attached, it becomes part of the primary, and has to stay back further away from that line.
Sure. And, and looking at the, looking at the job between the front of the house and the front of the garage, how many feet is that there? It looks like 10 feet or something there?
Looks to be about 12 feet or so.
12 feet, okay. Yeah, but at some point, then, you're looking at something that doesn't quite fit the character if you bring it up too much further.
Correct, because in this neighborhood itself, you have garages that are typically set back further from the, the street itself. I will note, there is some wiggle room there, noted, as far as alternatives within the code, maybe not the character of the neighborhood, but within the code, you could move that building up closer to becoming within 20 feet and still be an attached garage. Additionally, the building itself does not need to be 34 feet in depth for a garage, mind you, a legal parking stall is 18 feet, so 34 is not.
Sure.
Not even necessary for a garage.
Sure. And, and another thing that they could do would just be to disconnect these two things, is just have a notch in between those two structures, and then that thing is completely fine as it is right there.
So, within the code, you'd have that if you were to have a completely detached structure, for check 44-wise, you have to be at least three feet away from the primary structure, for building inspection-wise, state codes, depending on the fireproofing, that could become 10 feet from the structure, as far as separation goes. And obviously, you would lose your interior access point.
Sure, sure, but I mean, just from the playing games of the layout of the thing, if they detach this, they could have a three-foot gap between those two things, and leave the bulk of that thing exactly.
So long as you meant fire code, with fire separation.
Whatever you got, I'm good with the separation.
I get that. All right, any other questions for staff? All right, let's hear from the petitioners, and let me ask, ask each person who was going to be speaking to us today, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Okay, great, let's hear from you about why this is necessary.
Well, we're trying to keep.
Sorry, can we get your names and addresses for the record, please?
I'm Tammy Van Beaver, 943 South Madison.
Jeff Van Beaver, 943 South Madison.
Cindy Siegel, I'm at N1571 County Road, Jay in Takana, thank you.
So, when we, we just moved to this house in December, and we want to, the house was built in 1950, so the way people lived in 1950 is not the way we live now, we have no closets, and so, and it's a one-stall garage, and so anyway, we want to update it to how people live nowadays, but we're pretty much restricted as far as the lot, the lot is, it is what it is, so we're trying to work within the lot that we have, also, we have a very steep slope in our front yard, so, you know, we're working with that, too, we want to keep, we want to keep the character of a mid-century home, so this is, we went back and forth with Cindy, did help us with our plans on how we could do this, and this was really, pretty much the best plan that we came up with. You know, we have a neighbor, a neighbor behind us that's really close to our house, it's already there, so this isn't really impeding them at all, we do have support of all the neighbors in our neighborhood, so it's really the best plan that we came up with.
I'm going to speak towards the plan, then. One of the, the, some of the challenges that we ran into with this lot is, when you, we first researched it, originally, they, the, the plan was that Eliza Street was going to be the front yard, and then they had the depth for the deeper side yard, but when the house was built, they, they changed the orientation and they put it onto Madison Street, so you see why we've got the narrow, which now the rear yard is such a narrow setback. We've got the steep slopes on Eliza Street side, and then we've got the slopes on Madison, Madison Street, and part of the reason the garage is, is pushed back from the Madison Street side is, one of the goals of, of this house is to make it also handicap accessible, and that's one of the reasons we have its pushback from the street, not only because of the, the age of the, the neighborhood and what standard in the neighborhood, but we also would like that parking space to have a, a more level, more accessible parking area in front of the house and in front of the garage. The design is such that for the master, it will be handicap accessible, as are all of the spaces, turning spaces with, within the space, and it is a zero entry, so the idea being that they could, if they became where they needed a walker, wheelchair, they can exit their car in the garage and go into the house, wheel into the house, without having to go into the elements, having to risk ice or snow, or any of the, the conditions that we get here in Wisconsin. We did talk with John about the possibility of shortening up the garage, which I think we're kind of open to, but the, the, the whole goal is not only to prove it and bring it back to looking more like a mid-century modern house, but really is to make it functional, given the, sorry, guys, age.
Yeah.
But, the goal being that they can age in this place, you know, and, and it would be, if they reach the age where they are requiring assistance to be able to move around, they can have this, with this layout.
And as I met personally with eight homes around us, I have a document that I, they all signed off on, and there were two more that were added, I know that, but this is an addition, this is, this was the last neighbor, so I met with eight neighbors all around us, the ones right next to us, and they had no issue with where the, where the garage would be placed on the lot line, so, and, and we're a historical neighborhood, so that was a big thing for them, how it would look, so.
Any questions for the petitioners?
So, I just have a, just a couple more detailed ones, and John can probably help me with those, or looking at this, so is the, the furthest extent of the house to that lot line the same as what the garage's extent is to the lot line, is that distance there the same?
The extent is closer with the existing home compared to the garage.
Okay, so the garage is further away.
The existing home is about five and a half feet or so from the property line, they're looking for a little over six feet.
Okay, and I know you said that already, I apologize for wanting to ask that again. And is this, is it that, is there a notch of lawn in the middle of this here?
Right, this is still grass or green space.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then serviced maybe by a side door in the garage where lawnmowers kept or something?
Right.
Right.
One thing I'd like to add, too, there is, I mean, there really isn't any room in our backyard to put like a shed for any lawnmowers or anything like that, it's, it would, we would have to put all of that in the garage.
Right. Any, any questions for the petitioners?
No, no.
All right, let's start a conversation about this, thank you.
First, please, I want to start as with the Landmarks Commission, because I feel that they are re-reading this over, you know, it was proved based on that, not based on a garage that's going to be flush with the house, so I would be concerned that they would be starting back at zero, and I think it's important to maintain the integrity of the property, because it's historical, the, the history.
It's a pretty house, and they're, and I think what they're proposing to add to it is, is adding to the.
It's adding to it. As much as we appreciate that it is, would be accessible, that can't be part of the deliberation, because that's not what we're looking at here, so it just, it's not one unheard, it's just that we can't really think about that. I believe I would have enough to move forward if, if there was some talk about possibly making the garage a little less deep, if we could come to a compromise, but I'd rather hear from you guys first.
Yeah, I don't disagree with Farv, I think, first, or no, for that matter, I think that the proposed addition is, is quite nice. I think it's, is consistent with the spirit, purpose, and intent of, of the district, certainly the historical character of, of the, of the home and the district is, is helpful here. I think there are perhaps some exceptional circumstances for this lot with the additional slope, and trying to get back behind that slope to get there. I don't know that, I think I'm a little bit hung up on the preservation of property rights, I don't know that we need to have, that these folks need to have as big of a garage as is proposed in, in getting that close, close to the, the property line, as, as John mentioned, you know, compounding the issues that are already existing on the other side of the home.
But we would be maybe okay with, you know.
Something smaller, I think would be appropriate.
Yeah, but you need at least, I mean, in this day and age, preservation of property rights, two-car garage.
Two-car, two-car garage, I can, I can, but maybe not a 34-foot.
Right, maybe not, exactly, exactly, I think there has to be some compromise, I agree with you on that.
I don't, I, I, I can get there on the absence of detriment, you know, there's, through the letters of reference, as well as, you know, the, the design proposal, I think that it's, it's appropriate, I don't think that it's materially impairing to the neighbors or the public interest. I don't believe that this hardship is, is self-imposed, or, nor have I heard anything about it being based on economic grounds in older houses, that these folks are trying to get into, get closer to modern standards, so I think the biggest issue I'm having is how much, how much is appropriate to carve off the back of that garage, by a better term.
Chair, before you deliberate further, can I actually recommend that we go into closed session for a moment?
Okay. Sure, we can go to closed session, but I have to actually go to Voyager for once, and then you can go into closed session.
Can we take a recess?
We take recess?
Sure. What's your call?
It's a recess for lost forum. We'll have it, I have headphones on right now, I would tell her that this is a little bit different than her usual recess.
Everyone's clicking the email.
Do you need these extra signatures, or does that, does that matter to you, or?
I'll take it, sure.
While we're in closed session, actually, if you want to just make a copy.
Yeah.
Assuming the board does.
I guess, to make the motion go into closed session.
What exactly does that mean, closed session?
Um, so the board, because it's a quasi-judicial hearing, the board can talk amongst themselves privately, without that being open to the public.
Oh, okay, so we all like vacate?
Yeah, so y'all just step out, we'll close the door, we'll all, they'll talk, and then when they're ready, they'll go back and tell.
You guys turn the heat up in this room, I breathe. Yeah, it's really, really.
The whole building's chilly.
It's all.
Are you getting hot in there?
Yeah.
But now we can't move in?
You can both go into it.
You know, for the purpose of deliberating, you know.
We have a motion and a second, and then we read the.
Yeah, but I'm just going to say it out loud here, that we may wish to do this, to talk about the deal here, so, I have a motion to go into, the recess is over.
Wow, it is an area.
Sorry, that was my fault.
Yeah, it's as far as the focus of this.
I will move that we go into closed session.
I will second.
Right, there's a motion, a second to go into closed session, and a discussion here, not all in favor, say aye.
Okay, before we vote, which you already did, you have to actually read the, you made the motion, so if you can read the language.
Oh, boy, I didn't get the language.
Oh, it's far, you don't know the language.
It's defined for each item.
Okay, maybe your eyes are better.
The board may convene to, excuse me, the board may convene in closed session pursuant to Section 19.55 Sub 1, Sub 8 of the Wisconsin statutes, for purposes of deliberating, concerning a case which was the subject of any judicial or quasi-judicial trial or hearing before that governmental body, the board will thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to Section 19.55-2, Sub 2 of the Wisconsin statutes, to take action on items discussed in closed session if appropriate, and to consider the remainder of the agenda. Thank you, sir.
Then we can stop the recordings.
So we're closed for a couple minutes, so it's just way down in the hall. Did everybody?
Recording in progress.
So we have a motion and a second to reconvene in open session, any discussion here, not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, okay, we're back in closed session, thank you for participating in the mysteries of government.
All right.
All right, so continue our deliberations. You made the case, I think, for a variance on the five points, do you have any action you wish to propose on that, or is there any further discussion you want to have?
Do you want to have any discussion about, did we need to shave that?
I would, I would just say that I'm, I'm comfortable, as, as this case was presented by the petitioner, I thought they put their information together very well, and, and argued their case well. I find, as we discussed, you know, that, that all these terms are met, and so I'd be willing to vote for a motion that, you know, prove the proposition as requested.
I could see that, because the garage is actually further away than the actual houses, even though it's not within the code, but it is, it's more compact than houses, so I want to.
And all these houses are close together in this neighborhood, I mean, I think we're not, we're not violating the character of the system either, or any of the other things. You guys may recall, make a motion.
I'll, I'll. I'll.
I'll say.
For the reasons stated.
For the reasons stated, on the record, yeah, meeting the five tests. So, any further discussion? Here, not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you.
Number five, Appeal 24-16, consideration with possible action on a request from Gary Tree of Advanced Building Corporation, Appleton, and Atul Patel, property owner, seeking to reduce the minimum amount of parking stalls required for a motel from 45 to 28 surface stalls at 1704 South Ashland Avenue, Conde. Thank you for joining us at the table. Members of the board, in our attempt to ensure fairness in form and appearance and substance, please confirm the following statements by saying I confirm, if you are able to. I do not have a conflict of interest in this matter.
I confirm.
I confirm.
I confirm, I have not received any communication from any person or party about this matter.
I confirm.
I confirm.
I confirm, well, with the exception of the agenda, right? Sorry. And, like other items, we'll hear from staff first, John, on this item, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you, please present.
All right, so, the, the question here is 44-1726, minimum number of required off-street parking spaces, concern to here, two, hotel motel and bed and bed for breakfast, one space per guest room, plus two spaces per three employees under larger shift, additional spaces is needed for conference slash meeting or restaurant facilities. So a little background on the, the property, this is a motel that's located along the Ashland Furniture Road, which sells at Liberty. The facility itself has above 40 or so motel rooms in the two-story complex, this is the view from the Ashland Furniture, and been speaking with the applicant here, as they've been looking to explore ways to potentially utilize this. here, as they've been looking to explore ways to potentially utilize this southern part of the property for additional developments along that part of the property. So right now, the parking lot meets the amount of stalls necessary for the use, it's over 50 stalls, plus there could be more stalls put in, in this area, back over this way where there are no stripe stalls, back over there. But it's not utilized that much, they're looking to, back over in this area. So they're exploring, I guess, as far as potentially putting in development on the south side of the property. If you did that, that, you'd have to do one of two things, either possibly split the property off, or you had to change the construction of the parking lot, and the parking lot would have to then get into legal conformance for a parking lot, which it doesn't meet right now because of landscaping and setbacks on the property. Okay? So, this is the existing property, the way it looks like, from the access road, and this is what is being proposed by the applicant to meet the setback standards because it'd be a brand-new parking lot, property. So this would meet the intent as far as landscaping and setbacks on a property, however, it greatly reduces the amount of parking stalls on the property from 45 to, sorry, from over 50 to 28. And 45 is the minimum requirement for this property itself. So, while one part has been addressed based off of the landscaping and the setbacks, another one's been, another issue arises from this. So, the parking is lined up in this way to allow for developed area back over in this part of the property. When we were talking, we've been talking for a few months on this one now, as far as which way to go on this, and country's spinning the property up beforehand, and there were issues with that as far as asking for variances and things of that sort, to where right now, we're looking at this as a lens of, this is one parcel, okay? And the use is motel, would 28 parking stalls be acceptable as a variance on this site? Because what they've shown here would meet the rest of the code requirements and then have additional space for development into the future. That's why you're not seeing the parking stalls being used there. I do want to note that there are some people in the audience who would like to speak in this, and they brought forth some signatures that were against the variance, and then we can have them elaborate on that if they were to speak. Additionally, we did receive a letter from the property owner to the north. We received that from Hildenberg Realty, specifically from Scott Hildenberg, the in-house counsel for Hildenberg Realty. And I'll read their letter that was sent over. To the zoning board of appeals, please accept these comments on behalf of Hildenberg and Associates Incorporated, the owner and property to the unit of north, the subject property. Hildenberg and Associates, Inc., and its affiliate, including Hildenberg Realty LLC, have developed, owned, managed and provided brokerage services for commercial real estate for over 60 years throughout the Midwest with a focus on northeast Wisconsin. We have had an established business presence along South Ashland Avenue for over 40 years. We request the zoning and planning board appeals deny the applicant's variance request because the proposal is inconsistent with the intent of the zoning code, as it severely constraints off-street parking and emergency access and fails to demonstrate the hardship justifying variance under rebate zoning code section 44-141. The subject property already supports the required amount of parking stalls, so there is no hardship to justify a variance. The applicant's desire to develop another structure on the property does not create a hardship. The existing building on the subject property has a hotel capacity of at least 42 rooms. The building also includes space that historically was a restaurant. The building is estimated to be 12,633 square feet on a 0.96 acre lot per costar data. The city should evaluate the variance application not based on how the owner runs its business, but rather the code requirements governing off-site parking. Those requirements look to the building size and land use under section 44-1702, figure two, commercial use for overnight accommodations and food service. The parking standard is one space per guest room plus two spaces per three employees on large shift, additional spaces as needed for conference and/or restaurant facilities. Here, this standard requires at least 45 parking stalls based on room needs alone. For the undetermined land use size, the zoning code requires one parking stall for 300 square feet of net floor area under section 44-1726, subsection C. Under that standard, roughly 43 rooms would be applied to the overall facility. Variances can play an important role in facilitating the highest investment of property, but here, proposed variance hinders future reversing and of the building or redevelopment because it would result in 12,633 square foot building on almost an acre of land with insufficient parking. Also, the applicant's concept plan proposes a parking layout that severely constraints access for emergency vehicles. The current layout of the parking lot accommodates numerous emergency vehicles which historically frequent the property. This is not the case where achieving current landscaping code requirements justifies severe reduction in off-street parking stalls. Additionally, the subject property is adjacent to South Ashland Avenue, which has an estimated traffic count of 19,800 cars. Although certain conditions in the city may justify reduction in parking requirements, this property is not one of them. Good land use planning requires sufficient off-street parking when a large commercial property is next to a major transportation corridor like South Ashland Avenue. For the reasons stated above, we recommend the zoning and planning board appeals deny the variance application. I declare under penalty of perjury that the information provided in this statement is true and correct to the best of my knowledge. Thank you, Scott Hildenberg, in-house counsel of Hildenberg Realty LLC. Additionally, as part of what was noted in the narrative for this request, you'll see that there was a, a view that nine additional stalls could be on Liberty. We would not count those as far as parking stalls as they are on-street parking, especially in this case where the parking itself would be presumably overnight, and the city code does not allow for parking overnight between 3:00 a.m. and 5:00 a.m. Additionally speaking, street parking can be reduced, I would say, on a whim, depending on conditions, based off of as simple as construction, or if different committees determine that parking should be allowed on, say, one side of the road or not. So it's no guarantee that parking would remain at nine stalls in the future, given those conditions, and if somebody else happened to put in facilities that required additional curb cuts for expansions of either commercial or residential property.
Thank you, John. Is there any questions for staff? Let's hear from our petitioners. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Great. What's that? Well, I'm assuming the petitioners have listed on here, so, yeah, we got that information. Because we got a third person, we need to turn the.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to present. John has pretty well identified the things that we're trying to do here. The, the property has basically zero setbacks on Liberty Street and against the residential there, one on the north. In order to try, and it also has three driveway accesses, one to Liberty and two on Ashland. And the proposal here was to try and bring the, the property up to some level of landscaping code and eliminate the access on to Liberty, identify, isolate the two properties from each other, the future development property, with the, with the known issue of having to do this, you have to reduce the parking. So therein lies the, the difficulty. So the beautification and helping with the, the pervious area, trying to provide some curb appeal here, it's all at the expense of the parking. And there's not much of a defense on that as, as to what can be done, except that, well, there is access to some off-street parking. Mr. Patel does have the ability to shuttle. His, his census on the utilization of the hotel is really low, as in the notes, with the exception of game days. And a lot of his customers are flying in and Ubering, so the need for parking for, to accommodate that particular aspect is the area we're asking for some relief on. So that's why I, and, the restaurant, it's, it's not functional right now. I don't know of any plans to make it functional. It's, it's, would be a very difficult task to bring that up to code because it's so, it's, you'd have to gut it, remodel it, and, and completely change it over. And there's, there's all kinds of issues with doing that. So that's all I got. Patel, do you want to, or, Patel, do you want to ask, or share any information?
No. Okay. Questions for our petitioners?
If they could state their names and addresses for the record, please.
Gary Tree, 10828 Sauk Trail, Blue Mountains.
I think for the South County, the county of Wisconsin.
Thank you. I think the, the key question, you know, for me, understanding, you know, the, the market you might be serving with game day notwithstanding, you know, how, how could you, with a 40-plus-room hotel, not, not want to have a place to park for everybody? Do you have alternative, alternative parking someplace else where folks can go?
Yes, like we at another hotel, we can have them park there, we can bring their people over here. But like, most of our customers are like local, you know, local people, like they're renting by the beat, you know? So just like, on the game days only, we are like, sold out, you know? Not all the games, some of the games like Vikings and Chicago.
Yeah.
We know this is a difficult ask, and it's pushing the limits of parking. I've tried to be as transparent as possible with the narrative and talking about the average census and the percentage of people that stay there, that don't drive. We've done all we can to try and get as close to what you need as possible.
Yeah, I, I hear that, and the, the challenges I think we face when we look at these things is, you know, the, there's the acute issue at the present for somebody who's trying to do something with a property, like, I got the kid that needs a car, another car, I need to shove another car on my lot. And, you know, and there's others where when we look at something, we say, okay, that might be the case with the market that this hotel is, motel is serving right now, you know, but is the next owner gonna, you know, have a problem with the decisions made previously? You know, if this building's gonna stay in operation for the next 50 to 100 years, somebody opens up that restaurant someday again, and there's 40 hotel rooms and a restaurant, and there's no, there's insufficient parking for that because it's the best, you know, restaurant in town, and, and everybody wants to stay there, and, and they've all got cars. You know, that's the, I think that's the trick that we're looking at here, is that the decision we're making kind of runs with this land and, and could, you know, the, the case for why to vary, you know, from what might not be an unreasonable code that says, hey, it's for every, every room, you know, plus some for staff, is, is maybe pretty reasonable zoning language here. And so that, that might be a struggle for us, but I think if we don't have any other questions for the petitioners or staff, I think we should deliberate on this.
I think we had some folks up that were.
Oh, that's right, we had other folks who wished to, to speak to.
Do we need to move to open floor?
Nope.
Okay, because they're.
Because it's part of the hearing, so they'll say, there isn't really a floor.
So do they come up, do these guys go back, how is that?
Um, if you want to come sit at the end, yeah, you can do that.
My name is James Wolf. I live at 1621 South Harvard Avenue. I'm a resident of that house for 54 years. I've seen the hotel through.
Do we need to swear?
We have to swear. Oh, I'm sorry, your call, and I, I only did name it.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes. I've seen the hotel through various stages, and I do want to say they have been wonderful neighbors, that everything's always kept up. But unfortunately, the clientele that frequently resides there or visits there has caused safety issues with our families and our neighbor. But things happening with drugs, alcohol, prostitution, not that all of those things are going on, but over the 54 years, I've seen all of it. And our, our future is hopefully to keep a safe neighborhood. And to shrink the parking lot to possibly have more parking and more expansion outside is a fear factor of the neighborhood for safety. I know they do their best to try and keep everything organized, safe, and good clientele, but you can't control everybody, and it seems like it's, it's frequent. And for every rise we go through, it goes through and out of fall. And we would just like, like to not see the opportunity to create that safety hazard for our family and friends and children.
And if I may, I mean, how does the reduction in surface parking cause that or exacerbate that or change that?
We all have issues already with the parking being off-street, or off-parking lot on-street, and it's, it's people coming to visit, somebody else coming up to stay, and delivering goods that are legally prohibited. And they'll park in front of our homes, walk over, knock on some windows, and, and that's, I don't mean that as a reflection by you. It's just, people are people, and it's in every neighborhood, but it's our neighborhood that seems to be a little more present.
So you think you'll see more of that activity if there's less?
I think, I think it'll, it'll be causing more issues if the parking lot's smaller, then there's no place for them to kind of hide, or, you know, and then their intention is they want to hide and not be seen. I put cameras all the way around my halls, several of our neighbors have put cameras around the halls, automatic lights have come into hold, and it, it only helps to a certain extent. You know, and I'm in an industry where we do developments all the time, and I understand this, it, you know, things do need to be developed. And as a neighbor, to put as a whole, about 15 years ago, it had been condemned at one point because of things just falling down, and, and there was, things brought back, it was made beautiful again, it looked nice, but we just want to keep things going good the way they are, and I think, in which they have been, they've been, they've been good, I haven't noticed as many police officers or, so.
Any questions for this witness? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here who should just? I've got a question about kind of process here. You know, we're talking about doing this to make a potential second development site available on this property, but we haven't talked about what that might be, or how that might interface with the existing use, and I'm not sure it's relevant, but then at other times, I'm thinking, oh, it's totally relevant. So I'm not sure, but I guess unless somebody stops me, I'm going to ask, you know, you about what, what are the plans for the second potential site here where you to get the variance that you're requesting here?
Just before they answer you, just for context, so this is one, and, and you can clarify if any of this is incorrect, my understanding is that this is one where the parcels would be split.
And be sold.
And, and whatever the development is on that other parcel would be separate. So this is like that previous situation we had where there was actually going to be parcels that were going to be combined or split or whatever it was, but the board can't take any action with respect to that.
You're not, you're not planning to develop that?
So, so let me phrase it this way. Plans for that parcel would be consistent with the zoning and would meet all current ordinances.
But not necessarily your, your action, you're not necessarily going to develop?
Could be. Not going to say it won't be, but, but the idea would be that the 10,000 square feet is required. is required, and it would be totally conforming to current ordinances and would be within the permitted area. So we wouldn't be coming back to you for anything like that. But it's really, it's really a function of the parking, and I understand, I totally, this is a conundrum, and I totally understand. So we've tried to be transparent and let you know what our thinking is, and this is literally the best we can do for that property, Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff or the petitioners? All right, let's deliberate.
It strikes me that, off the top of my head, a lot of the reason for this request is based off of either self-imposed or economic grounds, what's hoping to happen with that property That's one of the top of mind issues I'm having right now. Probably have a few others, but I'm having a hard time getting to that hurdle, as well as the proposal to throw a good portion of these parking spots out into the neighborhood, which can't happen in the first place. I'm having a hard time getting there. Unless I'm convinced otherwise, I'm leaning towards a no right now.
I would agree with the hardship part, and also, I think there is possible detriment from hearing from the neighbors and knowing that these cars, the traffic, parking, there's fewer parking spaces than the traffic might, or parking might be on the streets, which creates more of a safety issue in my mind. And so, I think, you know, while the property will become beautified, or more beautiful, and that is a good thing, making those such, so many fewer parking spaces, to me, that is a detriment. So I can't do it on four or five.
Based on, at the risk of short-circuiting our conversation, based on what I've heard so far, I would move to deny the request.
I would second that.
There's a motion and a second to deny the request. Any further discussion? Yes, I have just a thought, not to belabor the point, because I think it's pretty clear with a motion and a second only through this here, but I do note, I think that this request in granting the variance as requested would be inconsistent with the intent of the code related to, you know, hotel motel parking.
You say inconsistent?
I think granting the variance would be inconsistent with that, and for me, then I can't get past the preservation of intent, which is number one on our list. The, you know, if there were a plan to say, let's repurpose this, and, you know, we're going to knock out the walls between every other unit and turn these into apartments, then you've got half the units, and you could look at that parking plan and go, maybe that works, but as a, you know, a place for lodging, you know, the code really, you know, I think got it right in terms of saying you've got to have a unit for everyone. I know that you've got folks that don't drive, I know that there's folks that fly in and Uber over to the facility, and I understand that you've got potential other parking places, but, you know, in our auto-dependent world, and with the crux of our zoning being, you know, businesses need to provide a semblance of that parking. If this were a retail operation, and there was lots of street parking around, and people could park there and go in and do their business and leave, that's one thing, but this is an overnight thing, so you can't, you know, you just can't have that street parking, because you can't park overnight, number one, and it's just not feasible. So I'm really struggling to get to that, too, I just wanted to say that while we're on the clock here. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none? All those in favor of the motion to deny, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Sorry, gentlemen.
That's okay. Thank you for your time.
Number six, appeal twenty-four dash seventeen, consideration of possible action on a request from Jesse Daniels, property owner and applicant, seeking to create a driveway within the side yard setback for a single-family residence at six twenty-one South St. Will Avenue. And, you know, as with all of these items, if you can, please state, I confirm to the following, I do not have a conflictive interest in this matter.
Thank you, Chair.
I confirm. I have not received any communication from any person or party about this matter.
I confirm.
I confirm. And as usual, we'll start with John, with staff. John, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
All right, please tell us about this request.
Thank you, Chair. Section forty-four dash one seven four seven, sub B, sub three, sub B. One uncovered parking stall, or parking spaces permitted in the side yard alongside a garage, provided that space is not located between the building and the street lines, and a setback from the side rear lights by no fewer than two point five feet. So, what's at play here is a detached garage along, in the back of the property, and the property owner is looking to essentially redo their existing parking lot, but widen up a little bit. So, looking at the street view here, you are seeing this retaining wall, which is part of the driveway, leading up to the property line. You'll see a fence in the background, that's essentially the property line. Their existing structure is right up alongside that line itself, and then, I'll get the exact distance here that Mr. Daniels provided, as far as the distance between the home over in this area back towards the property line. But what they're trying to do is essentially keep this wall here, but expand it an extra two point six feet off this way to make this wider. So, what I want to point out here is this is the existing driveway, seven to four inches, goes back to a garage back this way. They're looking to have it come and be a little wider, and garage go back over this way. So, the code states you have to have the two and a half feet off of the property line to do this, for going to that rear, back to our two point five that we've had for discussions here over and over again. But they're right up on the property line itself.
On just that one side?
On just that one side, yep. Oh, yeah, because on the other side, it's their property.
Okay.
Yep. I want to note, what you're seeing right here is the retaining wall, and we're going to see it in X. That's the property, or is probably a tiny offset, but it's the property line for this overall property. They have a part of their driveway that goes over the property line of the neighboring property. So we've had interim discussions as to whether there had to be an additional variance request, we don't feel it's appropriate for it, because the propertyer hasn't been in touch with the neighboring property, and they have said they would write an easement to allow for ingress egress to go over the property line here in the future. So, the reason why we're here is because they want to make this expansion to the driveway, it has to then be within the code, okay? The ten feet in between are eight foot minimum, twelve foot maximum, so that hits the code itself as far as width, but they are up along the property line. The neighboring property owners have given their okay to have this be up along the property line over in this part of the, on the northern part of the property as well, that shakes into their southern property line.
Have they indicated that they will sign easement if requested?
Right, so, I'll just go to this, you know, if this approval were to be granted, a condition should be placed in this to require that an ingress egress access even be recorded for that area that we have back over this way on the property. So, while it's been indicated, to get approval of the actual building permits, we need to see an easement. And that's typical for any property that happens to share a driveway in this area, where you have an ingress egress. If you're doing a new construction, that we require ingress egress easements to occur between both property owners, even though this be only for the use over at six twenty-one, it would not be for the use for the people at six nineteen.
So variance is required here because of the encroachment on the, or within the setback, but it's replacing the existing driveway?
Correct. Yeah, it's because it's on the northern property line, it's not setback two and a half feet from the property line itself. In theory, you could make a driveway that is two point five feet off of the driveway, it's off the property line itself, and have an eight-foot wide driveway from the building. The request needs to be ten feet in width.
And you also lose the absolutely funky hundred-year-old sloping walls on the other side of the street.
You do. In addition to speaking of this, this one was also a part of a historic Landmarks Commission request, where there is a lot of different issues ever put forth last year on this, and this was reviewed, and also given the okay from their own view.
All right. Thank you, John. Any questions for staff?
Nope.
All right. From our petitioner, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
All right. Tell us a little bit more about your situation and why you need this variance request.
Okay. The biggest, most obvious issue is the driveway is on and in that case at the front, over the lot line. The, sure, the narrowest part of the existing driveway is seven foot four inches wide, which it's, we're coming into the game under the minimum. We are hoping to create a ten-foot wide driveway, and that would require putting it, keeping it in place where it is along the lot line, something my neighbor and I have discussed, and he is okay with anything, as long as we don't disturb, he doesn't want to change, he doesn't want us to change anything about his front yard, and we don't want to disturb his fence, so we're trying to be respectful of that. Another tricky thing is the bay window sticking out on the side of the house. If we, if we did go by the two and a half foot setback from the lot line, we're getting very close to...
You're going to clip that.
Even if we, it's, the house is not, the shape of the house doesn't give a driver a straight line to follow, and yet, it's in danger of getting clipped. On top of the bay, or in addition to that bay window, on that section of the house, there's a twelve-inch furnace vent pipe existing that sticks out even farther. So, I had a measurement, it's thirteen foot eight inches from the lot line, as far as I can get to it. Looking at a survey we had done, the fence is a foot, is one foot four off the line, so I'm doing my best, but it's thirteen foot eight inches from the lot line to the house, subtract a foot for that furnace vent, and we're down to twelve foot eight, and, but we're still right on there. There's also a gas line underground, I'm sure of the exact location of that, so another reason we don't want to go too far, we don't want that two and a half feet to force us to go too close to the structure.
Are you just taking out that retaining wall then, on that side?
It would move.
Yeah, I mean, you're just going to, you can keep it, but move it over.
Well, we would have to, we wouldn't be able to keep that material.
Okay. I just was wondering historically if you had to keep that, but, no.
What we talked about, the Landmarks Commission was keeping the angle wall on six nineteen side, and on the other side, it would actually be straight up and down.
Okay.
And the, what would probably happen is the top of that wall would stay where it is, on the right side, there's, there is a better, okay, there you go. Where that, where the top of the wall is, if we straighten it out, we would get an extra two feet just by doing that.
That's nice.
So, we have an angle and a straight.
Okay.
And that was what the Landmarks Commission was okay with. The, as far as, in contrary to public interest, we're trying to disturb our neighbors as least as many as we can. If we had to create a two and a half, creating a two and a half foot distant setback would require redoing all of their side and going into their lawn, and granting the, granting the variance would disturb our neighbors less by keeping what's there for them. Another thing we struggle with is the grading of the driveway, it's another thing we're trying to solve with this, and it's, we have a more, the slope is more steep than what I think anybody in our neighborhood has seen, worse than ours in our neighborhood. Trying to lessen that slope and let it go farther out is going to require some excavation, and another thing, we don't want to get too close to the structure with doing that, and the slope is another, and so, keeping it farther away from the house by leveling out that slope, and leveling that out is important, we think, for safety, because, and just using the property in general, we've been unable to get into our driveway in certain winter conditions. We've had to park blocks, we're also in a hospital parking district, we can't park in front of our house, we have to fire away, trudge through, snow blow it, then go in, and that's, we've been trapped a few times with that. And walking up and down in icy conditions with a busy road at the end of the driveway is also a treacherous thing, slide, we've had it happen, sliding down, taking the garbage out.
That's good.
Okay.
Did well. No questions?
Any questions?
Not for me.
Any questions for staff or petitioners? None at all? Okay, let's deliberate.
I'm leaning toward a yes, and here's why. The preservation of the tent, it would not be inconsistent with the spirit purpose and intent for the district in which it is required to. Well, first of all, we're trying to preserve this historical thing, the wall, right, and having a driveway that is wide enough, because some portions are even too small right now. So, that gets it to where it's at least wide enough, and you can't move it over, there are too many hardships, which I can go to, you can't comply with it. It's not self-imposed or based on economic grounds, but the gas line and the slope and all of those things, I think, make it a hardship. Number two, exceptional circumstances, the conditions apply to the lot that don't apply probably to other properties or uses in the same district, again, bringing up the same items that I have brought up, would go to that. It's necessary for the preservation enjoyment of the same property rights which are possessed by other properties in the same district and vicinity to freely use your driveway and have it wide enough to get safely to the back of the house, not clipping off your window on the way there, and so, I can say yes to that. And absence of detriment, actually, it will not, I think it will, they're going to give an easement, which will be part of a motion if I make it, and it will not be contrary to the spirit, purpose, and intent of the chapter or the public interest, it'll make that a lot nicer looking for the neighborhood, so I don't think there's any detriment. Anybody else?
The only thing I would add is, I think that, you know, the increased safety factors based on, I mean, hammer on that piece, I think the increased safety factor will really help, so that's for me. It's a busy street, people don't want to, need to be skating on their, on their car or on their feet trying to hit nerve or anything like that.
It's kind of a bobsled run now, with the sloping walls.
I'm sure it's an adventure.
You know, I just thought of a question, though, in this conversation, is, and one of the things that, you know, we ask petitioners to do is look at alternative ways of doing this. Now, it looks like the lot's large enough that you could have run the driveway up the other side of the property, for example. Did you consider that as a possibility or as an option on this?
That, no, honestly, because of the, I mean, that, there's a fold, there's a two-some-foot retaining wall in our front yard going all the way over trees, mature trees in the way of that, and, I don't know, yeah, I mean, the retaining wall in the front, it continues all the way until our neighbor's driveway on the other side.
Sure.
This is where the driveway, as far, as all the evidence I can see, has always been on this property.
Sure.
In a historical district, we wouldn't want us to have too much of that.
Just asking in this, you know...
And I think we might also run into a green space issue, because we have less space over here as far as driveway, all we already is. If we put a driveway on the other side and conform with the setback, we have, there's more green space on the other side to work with. We have a percentage, we could have a better chance of guaranteeing our percentage of green space, keeping our yard. And I used to pick a yard on that side of the house, it's a super future, or something like this place, I think everybody would agree the side yard is preferred on this side rather than that side.
Sure, thank you.
I'd like to move to approve with the, for all the reasons that I stated, with the addition of, the condition of the easement.
A second. Here we've got a motion and a second to grant the request with the condition added. Any further discussion, hearing none, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried, if you bet your variance with conditions.
Yes.
Is, are we, do we have somebody online for item number seven?
It appears to be done, so I'd suggest I'll be table on this item until next month.
It appears to be done, so I'd suggest we table this item until next month.
You should still read the item.
So, appeal, number seven, Appeal twenty-four dash eighteen, consideration of possible action on a variance request by First Security Credit Union property owner and Brett Paul of X Site Real Estate, applicant, requesting to exceed drive-through facility standards for placement of drive-through window and menu board between the front facade of a building and the street at the three thousand block of Finger Road. Is the petitioner present? They are not present, I would entertain a motion to table this until our next regular meeting.
Second.
Any discussion, hearing none, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Other business, dated informational, dated our next meeting, June twenty-fourth.
Let it change from the typical. So, one week later than typical, because we have a conflict with the Plan Commission, which is also that date in this room, starting at six o'clock.
Okay.
All right. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion, hearing none, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, here's...